Sir, coming up. We're good to go, sir.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the December 7th, 2020 Burlington City Council Work Session. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. This meeting is streaming live via the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical difficulties at any time during this meeting, or especially during any public comment sessions, we ask that you contact our Public Information Specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. And for staff comments, or to address council or staff during this meeting, at the appropriate time, please indicate that you wish to do so using the Raise Hand feature in Zoom, or *9 if you're joining us via mobile phone or phone. Our IT Director, Scott Bibler, will notify me that you wish to speak at that time. And as a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis. I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes. Couldn't hear you, Kathy.
What was on?
There you go. Okay. Hi. It's very quiet. All right. Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Yeah.
Staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager, Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman. Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith. Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Here.
Director of Recreation and Parks Tony Laws. Tony with us?
I have not seen him yet, sir.
Okay. Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Planning Manager Conrad O'Meadow.
Here.
Animal Services Director Jessica Arias.
Here.
And Lieutenant Alan Baylock.
Here.
Excellent. Appreciate everyone. As we complete that process, we'll move on to Item A on our agenda, Economic Development Strategic Plan Kickoff. At this time, I'd like to recognize Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to you and other members of council, and happy Thanksgiving and future holiday to everybody here this evening. As promised at our last discussion on this topic, I am here to formally introduce our consultant partner for the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and give us a formal kickoff to this process. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Crystal Morpheus with the Creative EDC to introduce herself and say a few things about our strategic planning process that we're set to begin.
Thank you, Peter. It's good to see members of the council. And Mayor, thank you for allowing me a few minutes on the agenda. I'm glad to be working with the City of Burlington again. I'm actually coming to you from a local government office in North Carolina that requires masks, so I'll put it right back on as soon as I make a few statements. We have worked with the City of Burlington before in an executive search and some other economic development matters, so we're glad to be working with you on this strategic planning process. It is a process that will be led in large part by staff. They have several tasks to complete in the strategic plan. I'll just go over a few of those tasks, and I'll be glad to answer questions. We've launched the strategic planning process and started to do our economic and demographic profile, which is quantitative research on the city. We will reach out to stakeholders across the community. So we'll be reaching out to members of council, to the city manager and department heads, to the business community. We will have a general survey for citizens, so everyone will be able to have input. We'll also have some community sessions. We'll interview your economic development partners. So it'll be widespread input into the planning process. We will work with staff to help them complete assessments on product development, that's sites, buildings in your community. We'll also help them with other assessments of the economic development program. We'll complete an organizational analysis to make sure that your program is adequately funded and staffed and has the resources to carry out the strategic plan. At the end of the process, we'll deliver to staff best practices and help support them through implementation. You'll see all this will be wrapped up in the first part of next year. So it's a process that includes a lot of engagement from the community, as well as quantitative analysis and benchmarking in best practices. And at the end of that, there'll be a strategic plan for the Economic Development Department, and it'll be ready for them to implement for the City of Burlington. So we got it kicked off, and we'll be ready in just a few months. Again, we're excited to be working with you and look forward to seeing you in one form or another, in person, or in this unusual platform as we go forward. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Crystal. Any questions from council? All right.
All right, I'll mask back up now.
Yeah, we look forward to future updates and having you on the ground in this process.
Good. Look forward to working with you.
Peter, anything else you wanted, Dan?
I just wanted to add, I'm very thankful to be working with Crystal's and her firm. They have experience working with the City of Burlington and our management staff and council. They know us from that experience and certainly know the county and the region. So excited to be working with them, and certainly with all of you and members of the community who I've been speaking to over the last few weeks in preparation for this plan. So thanks to everybody.
Very good. All right, we'll move on to Item B on our agenda, which is a 2021 Proposed Fees and Charges Schedule. This time, I'd like to recognize our Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. We have heard from several of you expressing some concern about the recreation fees that are being proposed. So we, staff is pulling those recreation fees off the agenda for tonight and tomorrow night till possibly the next budget year, fiscal year 2122. That leaves us with changes for engineering and inspections. And Todd Lambert, I believe, is here, or Nolan's here. If we have any questions regarding the changes that are being recommended for engineering and inspections, you may have noticed that fire, we also included the fire inspection fees, and council voted on those for the fiscal year 2021 budget. So there's no action required on those. But since this is the fee schedule where we normally include all our fees, we wanted to include them for you. And Todd, or I will be able to, will be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
All right. Questions from council regarding these items?
I have a question. Peggy, we're going to pull off all the recreation proposals at this time. Do I understand it correctly?
Yes, we're going to do a review tonight to see if there's any, like, an administrative quirk or change that we want to come and bring to you tomorrow night. But until, we haven't had a chance to do that review, but most likely, all of the recreation fees are going to be pulled off, yes.
Okay. And Peggy, when do you anticipate those will come back?
We can bring them back whenever council would like us to. We can bring them back in January, or we can wait until the fiscal year 2122 budget process.
My preference would be to see them in January. I think, as detailed in the agenda, there's some, some good thought process and a lot of work from staff on the attempt to recover costs related to those rec fees. So I'd like to, to see those come back for further discussion and approval sooner rather than later, especially as we look at the challenging economy and balancing budgets going forward.
I would like to see it come back during the budget process. And the reason for that is, I think, some of the recommendations, which certainly impact in terms of fee increases on lower income community, and this is certainly not the time to do that until we get the COVID situation somewhat taken care of. The history of fees and charges is, is pretty significant in our community in terms of, we were one of the first communities in the state. They went with an aggressive fees and charges program in Parks and Rec. Some of the increases, while I know there was a study done, I believe, are really substantial, and I've compared to some, some of the other communities in our state since last night. And they are really, would have to take an awful lot of discussion. I like to wait and see where we are in terms of our budget. It gives us where we're going to be financially going forth into the, into the new calendar year. And then certainly, those fees could be approved as part of the new budget package if agreed upon.
I agree with it. I think that's reasonable, and also a part of the discussion. I saw something in the materials that says a pyramid model. I'd never heard of it. I'd never seen it in Chapter 168, nor had I seen it in the Home Builder versus Charlotte case. I'd like to see some discussion of the pyramid model, and also the fees, and, you know, some discussion of that case as it relates to the fees.
Other council comments?
I think we're between a rock and a hard place on this. We're trying, we've said to the administration that we want to, we're trying to avoid raising taxes, and that's reason for these kinds of fees. And on the other hand, they are, they're a barrier for some people in order to use our facilities. And so I think there's a struggle between those two concepts. So I'm, I'm willing to, especially with COVID, it just seems to me that having people outside getting together in a shelter is something that we, is a good way for people to be together where they can keep their distance and be outside. I don't want to stop any kind of thing that makes life a little bit simpler for people during this time.
Jim, any comments?
No, I mean, I'm in, I'm in full agreement with, really to echo Harold's comments. I applaud the group for looking over the fee structures to try to figure out how we can get things more aligned to continuously provide the, the level of services and, and quality of services that, that we do offer. But, you know, timing is, is critical too. So I'm, I'm fine to wait.
The question to all council, there, there's kind of a couple of different pieces moving in this, and Manager Watkins may be able to elaborate. But I think one is the fee and change schedule, which we look at every year when we do those. But two is the process that staff went through related to evaluating cost recovery. And I think it's important to note that in some cases, we, we decreased fees, or we did not increase them at a rate of the costs for recovery. I think some programs are only, we're only recovering 3% of the cost. So it's not like we've overburdened every program, or, or people accessing every program. I think this is an important part of our discussion when we look at what the City of Burlington does, because we can't be everything to everyone. And so I think we owe it to staff to have some further discussion about what our expectation is for these adjustment processes and, and cost recovery processes. And that, that discussion, I think, should happen well before the budget discussion, because it's going to influence the way staff makes budgets going forward.
Well, I don't disagree, but then that needs to be done for all of our fee structures, Mayor. We don't pick one particular.
Well, no, I think, and maybe Manager Watkins can elaborate on this, because rec and parks was identified as one of the highest opportunity areas to do some updates to that process to make sure that we were balancing our budget. And as Jim mentioned, leveraging, or I think as Kathy mentioned, leveraging our tax dollars.
Mayor, who identified that?
Like, Manager Watkins, again. Harden, you want to talk a little about that?
I think we've been, we've been talking for, I think, in public budget messages, two or three years about starting priority-based budgeting. And as you look at priority-based budgeting, what, what sort of industry across the country, as you talk to folks that are doing priority-based budgeting, is that recreation program costing is a good place to start. And it's, it's, you know, we, we do have a fee per service, a fee per program, if you will. It's a good place to start the exercise, and that, that's where we've started this year. And I mean, I, I think maybe to, to offer a path forward is if we can just, we'll just spend some time with council over January, February, get you up to speed on the philosophies. I think that's one thing we failed to do at the staff level, is to sit down and go through some of the philosophies and the research, and some of the staff work that's happened. We haven't done that. I think this just got rolled into the fees and charges table, as you've seen in the packet. And it certainly lends itself to have further conversation and more detailed conversation to, to understand some of that work. And there's some folks doing this, like I said, across the country. And we've, one person in particular who is, has helped us, kind of helps you look. And Mr. Ward, that's where I think the, the pyramid recovery concept came from, was from that particular consultant. So we'll be, we need to, we need to spend some time with you all explaining where that came from and what that is all about, and where it's been used. And it's, I think it's intended to be just a guy, a guy, a guideline, quite honestly. It's not a requirement, certainly.
Does that work for council over the January, February time period to get some further information on that process and understanding there? Okay. And then the consensus being that we'll bring the fees and charges back in the 2122 budget process?
Or recreation.
I would like to recognize that some of the work done does simplify the fee process. I appreciate staff doing that in kind of reducing the number of lines of fees and the complexity of weekday, weekend, and some of that confusion that could result there. So I appreciate some of the simplification that was added into that document. Other questions, comments on this?
Could I ask a question about the right-of-way use permit fee? What is that? What does that cover?
Hey, so for engineering, we permit any, any, that's basically our encroachment fees. So anytime that a, whether it be a contractor is, is working in the right of way. So if they are making a, for example, if they're making a tap on our water line, and they're doing it as part of a development, and they're extending our water line, that fee is, covers the permit to actually work in the existing right-of-way. So we perform a preliminary investigation. We do inspections on that, and then we close out that permit separate from the infrastructure that they're building in, internal to the property. So that, that covers basically water and sewer taps. There could be other uses, whether someone is, is modifying or doing something in the right-of-way as part of an encroachment.
Other council questions? Peggy, could you just reiterate the items that are still on the table, and request those are to be approved on tomorrow night's meeting, correct?
Tomorrow night, we're going to have the engineering and inspection fees for approval. Fire has already been approved in the regular budget, and it's just shown here so that we're not just pulling it out of thin air in a year down the road. They've been approved, but we wanted to include them in this fee schedule, since this is all encompassing.
Council, any objections to including these in tomorrow night's agenda?
No.
Not here.
Very good. Thank you. Peggy, any further items on this?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item, which is Item C, Public Art Donations. At this time, I'd like to recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Mr. Mayor, let me, let me ask a question. With respect, looking at my agenda, as part of what Peggy had proposed, are we going to go back? And what I want to do is, I want to, I want to talk about, it may be under D, is it about the 1% increase? Is that under D, Peggy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. Sorry. Let's go ahead and pick it up, Mayor. I just, I want to make sure we have that.
We got a full agenda, so we want to make sure we hit everything. So.
Okay, that's good.
All right. Go ahead, Rachel.
All right. Thank you. I will try to briefly cover this background about public art. Can you guys see my screen okay?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Now, as, as you may recall, we, City Council approved a public art memorial and donations policy in 2017 to provide some guidance about accepting donations. As you know, a lot of times, we, we're approached with different types of donations, public art, or something to memorialize or honor someone in the community. As part of that policy, we have what I call an ad hoc public art committee. It's kind of dependent on the piece of art, if it's in the right-of-way, or adjacent to the street, whatnot. We'd have engineering involved, or transportation, if it's within a park. Of course, Parks and Rec is involved. So the public art committee met regarding two specific requests. And we've got an evaluation criteria regarding the project objectives, the recognition if it's a memorial or an honorary, the relationship and appropriateness to the proposed location, maintenance costs, installation costs, insurance. Peggy's involved at the table regarding liability and insurance, aesthetics, safety, cultural and community values. So those are enumerated in the policy. All right. So the first request we have comes from New Leaf Society, and I believe Ms. Janice Burgess is on the call. I'll present this, and if you've got some questions that she can address, she's, she's here to do that. New Leaf Society has approached the city about donating a bronze sculpture of two children and a dog to be placed in the Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park near Acock Avenue in the future Rose Garden area. This piece of art is estimated to be about $60,000 in value, and is modeled after Bill and Anell Kobel's children at young ages three and six in their bass at hand. This sculpture would be done by Ed Walker, who is the artist who has also done the eagle at the Veterans Overlook, and the phoenix that's located at the Shaw Center in Elon. And that's a Carolina Bronze Sculpture Inc. out of Seagrove, North Carolina. The Willowbrook Arboretum plans do call for sculpture and art throughout the arboretum as it goes forward and is developed. That is in keeping with, with those plans. This is a sketch provided by the artist this weekend. I apologize that we didn't get that to you any sooner, but I'm glad we're able to show it to you tonight. And we also asked for some sort of comparable sculptures and statues, so we'd understand what that would look like, this life-size bronze sculpture. And the foundry provided some of these examples of life-size individuals cast in bronze. I don't know if you have any questions about this particular item before I move to the next public art donation request.
Rachel, I have a question. This is Bob Ward. Do you have, has there been some consideration given by the committee as to the theme of sculptures you'd like to see in Willowbrook, or that type of thing? Or is it just going to be on a case-by-case basis?
At this point, there's, there's no policy or anything written in the programming about what type of sculpture it would be, but certainly appropriate to the location. For instance, the, the eagle that's part of the Veterans Plaza, that's recognizing the branches of the military service with the eagle flying, obviously very appropriate to the location where it's been placed. And this one is children playing, you know, in the, in the park structure. So now we, we don't have any overarching guidelines, more of an appropriateness based on that evaluation criteria in the policy.
Thank you.
Other council questions on this one? I assume this will be a sturdy statue, should children decide to play on or around it.
Absolutely. And the, the staff committee recommended that council consider adopting or accepting this gift on a preliminary basis, because we do have in the policy that there would have to be engineer sealed base and installation. And of course, we've not gotten to that point yet.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Ian, if I can just add that it would be, it would be mounted. So, you know, it would, it would be secured in the site.
Very good. Thank you for that. I have fond memories of a giant bronze rabbit statue near where I grew up, and the kids loved climbing on it. And the neighborhood always did a great job decorating it with the holidays. So these types of bronze monuments really do add life and character to parks and natural areas.
Right. If y'all are ready, I'll, I'll discuss the second public art donation request.
Go ahead.
Right. This request, as you've seen in your pocket, is a request from Mr. Charles Kleberg, who has contacted Mr. Laws, who's also on the call, I saw him log in, about donating a carousel horse that came from the North Park Carousel. And as you'll see, I've got a historic photo of that carousel as it was being dismantled. It was given to the city in 1952 by the J.C.'s and was placed at North Park. And then, from what we can tell about circa 1968, was auctioned off. Sorry, here are a couple more historic photos, which are really neat. These are courtesy David Huffman. And this animal right here currently lives at the Mako Bigelow Center, and it is the North Park Horse that was retained and restored from the North Park Carousel. So we do have one that we know came from the carousel and, and was restored beautifully, in my opinion. And that's, that lives at Mako Bigelow right now. So this is the animal that Mr. Kleberg would like to donate. It was found about 16 years ago in a shed in Alamance County. And the owner of the property and Mr. Kleberg, who is a carousel enthusiast, both feel that it came from the North Park Carousel auction, and it is in keeping with other known animals, the same type of paint, same wear and tear, that came from the North Park Carousel. Couple more pictures here. We did reach out to Carousels and Carvings Inc., the group that has been contracted to restore the Burlington Carousel at City Park, and showed them a picture of the horse that we know came from North Park, those historic photos, and this carousel photo. And they believe that it's from the same carousel as well. We do not have any concrete evidence that this is a North Park Carousel horse. There was no certificate of authenticity. We can't find any records from the auction. They've been purged since 1968. But the anecdotal evidence does imply that this is a North Park Carousel horse. Mr. Kleberg would like to donate this to us with the parameters that it be used to tell the story of the Jim Crow era parks, the, the segregation era parks, and the two carousels that we had in our community. So he has asked that if council and the city choose to accept that donation, that it be used in some way to educate, and it be located at City Park or at North Park. Staff's recommendation, because we've got an animal at Mako Bigelow, is to include that with the, with the Burlington Carousel restoration as part of the public art allocation that we have in that budget, because we would obviously want to get this restored by professional historic carousel restoration group. This animal's valued at about $8,000. It is a Denzel Mueller hand carved turn of the century carousel horse. All right. And that is the end of my presentation. Please let me know if you'd like me to go back and show you any more photos.
Thank you, Rachel.
If you've got questions for me, or Tony, who's been in communication with Mr. Kleberg about this possible donation.
It looks like Tony's on the call now as well. Council, any questions regarding the carousel horse donation?
Where is the horse now?
I believe, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong. Was it in Mount Airy at a, a antique shop?
I'm not sure. It's in North Carolina. I don't know exactly the right place, even though Mr. Kleberg's not living in North Carolina anymore, I don't think.
My understanding is he has it at an antique shop that might be closing down or something like that. So he's looking for a, a home for it that's appropriate.
Rachel, you indicated that in terms of location, you mentioned it to come to, I may have missed something there. Is that going to be, is that decided upon? How would you display it at the, at the carousel itself?
Yeah, we have not decided about how that would be displayed, or what the, or how we provide the appropriate context about the North Park Carousel and the carousel at City Park. I think that's to be determined, but in our estimated budget, we've, we've taken into account the fact that it would need to be appropriately displayed and have some sort of plaque to give it the right context in that facility.
Yeah. Thanks.
Is Mr. Kleberg looking for a, just a commitment that will move in this direction? Or is he looking for a finite plan? Because it appears to me that a lot of what we're going to be doing is kind of up in the air. It's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dots that have. It's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of dots that have to be connected along the way. So, you know, the commitment that we could move forward with this would be one thing, but the, the resolution of how and where and the context of the display probably is a little premature. Is that, am I safe to say that he's just looking for the commitment?
Yeah, in his application to donate the public art, he's, he's left it relatively loose, if you will, saying that he hopes that it be displayed at North Park or City Park and be used to educate about Jim Crow era parks. So that, those are the parameters that he's given us.
I'll, I'll add to Rachel's comments. I think the other thing we'll be looking for too is how to display some of the other items that we have about carousel history in the community. So hopefully there'll be a little room in the carousel structures that we have at City Park, you know, for some of that on display. I think we'll take all that into account at one time.
Other council questions? Any discussion to, or any opposition to including both of these items on tomorrow night's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I could say, one quick comment. I've already been contacted, because I want you to know this context. I've already been contacted by a son of a former employee of our department that bought one of these North Park carousel horses. And that person, she gave it to a son of hers, and he's passed away, and now they want to donate it back to us. So that may be coming down the line too.
That's a third horse that you're referring to, Tony?
A third horse, yes, sir.
Not too much longer, and the whole carousel's going to be back.
I don't know about that, but I know this one, I work with the employee that bought this one. So I know this, the one that this one is talking about is an authentic North Park horse.
All right, well, thank you, Rachel. I appreciate that presentation. And we will move on to Item D on our agenda, which is Pandemic Impacts Financial Update for Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021. This time we'll recognize City Manager Harden Watkins.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Reese is going to share her screen. And then we will dive into our presentation together.
All right, got that screen share up?
Would you like for me to start, Harden?
Yes, please.
Okay, before we even begin on our presentation, one of the, I guess, few silver linings of the pandemic is interest rates. And we have seen that with people refinancing their homes and choosing to go out and purchase new homes of maybe a larger size than what they previously had. And so our financial advisors and myself, we have been looking at the market for the revenue bonds for the water and sewer fund. And if we went out to the market with today's rates for a public sale, we could possibly save anywhere from four to four and a half million dollars over the life of the loan if we refinanced. And, but before we go to the public market, that's a little bit more involved. We wanted to get your permission to put out a bid to banks for what is called a private offering and see where our rates came in at. If you give me the nod to go ahead with that, we will be back to the council in the future saying, we put out this bid, this is what the rates are, this is what the road is that we think we should do. I just didn't want any, any banks to all of a sudden contact you and say, hey, I got a bid, and you didn't know anything about it. So I wanted to get, kind of get your nod, approval to go ahead, because that is a substantial sum of money on our, for the 2010 and 2011 revenue bonds. And it may not be four million. It could come in at 3.8 million. It just depends upon what the banks do and where the market is at that time.
And Peggy, the request came in late last week from our independent financial advisors?
Yes.
I have no problem with that personally. I think it's a great idea.
Agreed. I'll give that a nod too. Go ahead.
Sounds reasonable, so we'll look forward to it.
Thank you very much. Now we'll start with our presentation and let me see if I can get it changed. Okay, first of all, we will go over our general fund revenues. We are through five months, but our sales tax is only three months. And that, that is due to the delay in what we have as reporting months and when we actually get the sales money. So we are going to get another chunk of money, a million dollars and more of sales tax on December 15th. And Harden's going to talk to you about where we are actual this year versus last year. Our property taxes are coming in strong again for the, and this even showed up in the first couple of months of this year compared to actual last year. We are roughly about $500,000 ahead in our property taxes, and that goes to what I alluded to earlier, lower interest rates. People are refinancing or choosing to buy a larger home. So our other revenues are coming in line with what we are expecting for five months. Does anyone have any question on the revenues? On our expenses, we should be at approximately 41%, if you, 0.7% if you take five months divided by 12 months. And everybody is in line with that. The exception is the debt payments at the very bottom. It's at the line before the totals, they're at 77%. But that's because our debt payments are at the beginning of the year versus the end of the year. So we're still okay with our debt payments, because those are one-time payments. The other one that I would point out is the general administration line. That looks like we're at 79%, but we will get a 2.3 million reimbursement from the Water and Sewer Fund at the end of the year that will help reduce that number. So we really are fine with, with what we have spent thus far this year. The encumbrances are primarily two things. One, P-card encumbrance or our capital encumbrances, that we've, we've ordered police cars and we've encumbered those funds. The P-card encumbrance is so that I do not have to go out to the gas station every time somebody starts to use a P-card to purchase gas and sign the pre-audit statement saying that we've got funds available and committed to that. So this is what the P-card encumbrance does, is it keeps us in line with the state statutes. Does anybody have any questions about the general fund expenditures?
Peggy, on that general administration line, is, is there a way going forward to change the way we account for that? To provide us with better tracking? I understand the explanation you gave, but if that's kind of an ongoing, always the same process, is there a way to divvy that out so we can actually see the progress with a real number?
Our governance with the revenue bonds dictate how we, when we can distribute, reimburse the the general fund for what we have budgeted. It is possible that we can maybe put it as a separate line item all by itself and take it out of the general admin.
I mean, I think, yeah, if you had a second line item for the reimbursable, that would at least let us know where the, the rest of the fund is, because right now it's in a gray area.
It is a cleaner transition to do it that way, and it's a lot easier to, to defend the maneuver from a statistical standpoint. So I like the way we do it, and I understand what the mayor's saying, but I do like the one-time transfer.
Okay. Water and sewer revenues, they are coming in as fine. This is an enterprise fund and operates more like a private business fund. And so at the end of June 30th, we are, in the beginning of July, we are billing our water and sewer customers at the beginning of the month and for the first couple of weeks. And a lot of those bills really are dealing with June. And so we accrue the June revenues back to the June 30th year-end, and then we reverse them out at the, in July. And so it kind of makes our numbers look a little bit low, but we are doing, we're, we're doing okay with where we were last year.
Peggy, since the governor ended his executive order on, in reference to water and sewer payments, what, where are we now? I mean, what are we seeing in terms of a trend with people getting behind or cutoffs?
Well, unfortunately, with the governor, six months of not being able to cut off water and sewer customers for lack of non-payment, individuals interpreted that as we don't have to pay at all, ever. And so it's caught some of them by surprise. But we are working with those citizens. We are calling and telling them that they've got to make a payment or, you know, the cutoff could be coming. And we're giving them the six months to pay what they owed as of June, July 31st. And we are not, you know, anybody who's reaching out to us, we are working with them. We're trying to get out there the information about the CDBG CARES funding that can help go towards the utility payments. At first, it was for only three months and limited to $100 a month, but the family average bill is around $50 a month. But now it's been extended to six months, so we're trying to go back and work with that. The thing that is, some people are not willing to share their private information. They're not willing to share that they lost their job due to COVID. They're not willing to share what their income actually is. And some of those things are required in order to be, to qualify for the CDBG funding. But rest assured that we are working with our citizens any way possible to avoid the cutoffs.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
So for our water and sewer expenditures, it's the same kind of thing, 41.7%. And some of these look high, and the encumbrances, again, are the P-card encumbrances and capital encumbrances. So when you look at that, these accounts are doing fine. All righty, now I'm going to turn it over to Harden.
Harden, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Peggy. So I wanted to give you that, that background and let you see those pages from Water Resources and General Fund. Let me dig in a little bit more specific now and just remind on the schedule. So I was, the council adopted a budget in June of 2020 that we're operating under now. September of 2020, we gave, we came back and gave you a mid-year sort of first quarter update. And this is our second quarter update, so as we get close to the end of the second quarter. And the things that we've talked about, you know, we're looking, I think what we talked about in June, we talked about in September, where we'll have some future budget adjustments to consider. We'll have some recommendations from the budget team for the remaining quarters, third quarter and fourth quarter. And then we'd have a better picture now about how we've been able to address our actual workload demands. You know, remember we froze 26, froze, we have 26 frozen positions, and we want to bring some of those back. And again, just a reminder of things that we had talked about previously is we have reduced spending across all our departments. We've been able to use some CARES Act funding for some of our needs. Revenue receipts, as we hoped, back in June are higher than we projected. And then we've obviously had a handful of unanticipated needs that have popped up in various departments. So let me walk through what else we want to cover this evening. Is a, just to give you an update on the major revenue sources, which I'll do a quick overview. And Peggy's touched on some of our revenues. I'll dig in a little bit deeper on sales tax and property tax. And then Peggy's covered probably everything we wanted, we plan to talk about related to utility payments already. I'll talk a little bit about the federal CARES Act funds that we received through the state of North Carolina. And the state of North Carolina has created a pandemic recovery office that has lots of rules about how those funds are used. And Alamance County is helping interpret and minister that program for us. And then we want to talk a little bit about employee pay, so employee and pay expenditure concepts, and then a handful of other needed expenditures that have popped up since we met in June. So on our major revenue sources, and again Peggy alluded to some of these, so I'll just dig in on the details. What we see right now on sales tax is that we're 10.27% over last year's amount for the same time period. And council, I sent you an email with some of this information in it last week, and that had us at three months at 8% over. And so in the, in the month that we've gotten since then, we're now up to 10.27%, which is great. That's about $492,000 more than we budgeted for the June through September time period, which is really, really good news. And so we budgeted, as you recall, an 11% decline. So I think, you know, the easy way of saying that is we're 21% to the good, which is really, really good news for us for this part of the fiscal year. CARES Act funding, we've received $534,000 in this fiscal year. The remainder of our CARES Act money was received in the previous fiscal year. This is being applied to assist with our new pay types, things that were required in the Family First Act. And then we spent some of that on some other COVID-related expenses. But the bottom line on that, again, in parentheses here, is the city's expended $534,000 less than we expected to when we adopted the budget in June, thanks to that CARES Act funding. And then finally, property tax collection category, we're $580,000 over the same time period for our prior fiscal year. We think that's due to folks who obviously have their taxes paid by their mortgage companies. They have to pay at the earliest date. We also think there've been a number of home sales throughout the community, and those both have positively impacted collections. We do realize that some of the folks that may be a little slower to pay will be paying on the January deadline. So we don't expect this same amount of overage, but we think that will certainly be okay in terms of hitting our projected targets. Any questions on that? I'm going to move to expenditure side. Anybody have any questions on any of those categories? Or Peggy, anything else you'd like to add?
Any questions from council?
So those are all good news pieces. And so here's a handful of expenditure things we want to suggest to city council as our budget team. The top recommendation of the budget team is a recommended employee merit increase for all of our full-time employees. That excludes our sworn police. They're in a separate pay plan called, it's a developmental increase pay plan. And that will, that began in, for them in October. So when we adopted the budget in June, their pay increases began, they were delayed for the month of June, excuse me, for the month of July, August, and September. But their pay increases began in October so that we could get, keep that plan intact and keep that plan moving as designed by PTRC for us a year and a half ago. And so we would, we would propose a one and a half percent merit increase for everyone who's performing satisfactorily. And that would be one and a half percent, again, equally applied, no differentiation from one employee to other, except those who obviously have started, had just started here or have some sort of disciplinary issue or on probation. So the 1% of that was what the number we had talked about back in June. That represents $147,000. That was included in the budget that you adopted in June, so that's already included and accounted for. What the budget team is recommending is that we ask your consideration for an additional half percent merit increase on top of the 1% we talked about in June. That cost for that number of employees would be 73,600 to the general fund, and I think a little over 50 to the Water Resources Fund. That would need to be allocated from the revenues noted in the above categories that I talked about. The other, there's some other expenditures. We would like to restore a handful of mission-critical frozen full-time and part-time positions across multiple departments. We want to folk, we've obviously focused on our frontline service delivery, and we also, the focus is ensuring our strong leadership in public works operations. We did freeze a couple of superintendent roles in public works, and we believe we need to get those unfrozen so we can continue our service delivery in public works. So that nets out unfreezing nine full-time positions, four part-time positions. That's building services, streets, grounds and cemeteries, solid waste, recreation maintenance, three areas within animal services, and waterline maintenance. So we still would have, we also, we had three positions. So in addition to those, there are three positions that were frozen, frozen for a portion of the fiscal year, but have now been restored, and that's in fire, streets, and recreation, and those are all leadership roles. And then we would ask that 11 positions remain frozen. We'd leave those frozen and bring those back to you at a future time. Or if we make it to next year's budget, we'll talk about it. Or if we make it to next year's budget, we'll talk about it then. If there are some special needs between now and, you know, when we get into our budget discussions in April, May, June, we'll let you know. But that's in finance, budget, budget manager position. Recreation, we have positions in golf maintenance, teen programs, athletic maintenance and events. Many of those are part-time. And then water resources, we have pipe maintenance and wastewater operations that would remain frozen. Peggy, if you'll move to the next slide, council, that's a, that's the kind of format we don't like to give to you because it's so small on one page, but that's a spreadsheet version. I think you all have a hard copy of this that was delivered to you this evening and emailed to you. But this is the spreadsheet version of what I just went through. There are a handful of other, these are non-employee expenditures, but a handful of things that we want to try to also take care of now if council's amenable. One is our friends at Residential Treatment Services, Ron Osborne and his group. As it turns out, we, we learned this, basically the city collects a mixed beverage tax on behalf of RTSA and Family View Services and just passes that through so they can help provide the services that are needed in our community in those two areas. As it turns out, that money with the closing of the bars, that money did not come in as expected. None of us thought about that, thought through that in, in July, June and July when we were adopting the budget. And so what we've proposed to Mr. Osborne is just, this is the amount he's short, or anticipated to be short for the rest of the fiscal year. And we would assume a transfer out of the general fund. And we ultimately, I think, feel like we can cover that for them. Those services are obviously much needed and maybe needed more than they were at this time last year. But he has no other way of raising funds. We, Family View Services also had a summer situation, but they had expenses that they could attribute back to COVID. I think they had to rent hotel rooms because they could not utilize their facilities in the same, their residential facilities in the same volume they had before to try to provide social distancing. And because they had spent money on hotel rooms, that was eligible for CARES Act dollars. And we were able to funnel those dollars to them. Mr. Osborne over at RTSA did not have new expenditures. He's just short on revenues. And so we want to try to help them make that up for the rest of this fiscal year. Alamance Chamber, we budgeted three quarters. We have a monthly payment to them of $12,500. Back in June, we budgeted three quarters, hopeful that revenues would come through in January as, as we think they are now. And so I would recommend that we budget the 12.5 so we can make our fourth quarter payment to the chamber when we get that bill at the beginning of the fourth quarter. And then finally, our employee health, well-being, engagement. In occupational health group, we're interested in moving forward with a platform through Corillian Clinic and a company called Virgin Pulse. The product is called Pulse. It's Virgin, a Virgin Atlantic Airlines has a product. Our new occupational health nurse has, has brought this with, has, has experience with this product. But it will give us a way to, sort of reinvent and start off our occupational, excuse me, our employee wellness program. There's a handful of things it does. Digital coaching, healthy habit tracking, health assessments, customizable challenge, some lifestyle coaching, on-demand reporting. I think it certainly demonstrates its value just as a added service. But what the folks at Virgin Pulse are telling us is that the projected savings on our medical claims and prescriptions and workers' comp will more than offset the investment we make in the product. So this 27.5 here would be for half of the fiscal year. Okay, Peggy, is that, I think that's it. Oh, so overall summary, just a real quick summary. And is the revenue outlook is positive across the board? Our top priority request is the employee merit pay increases that would kick in hopefully January 2021. And just reminding council, we did five, we did $500 for all employees back in July in lieu of merit increases at that time. And that was as much appreciated by everyone, but we want to try to get back onto our pay plan for our employees as well now. And then finally, restoring our key positions so we can keep doing our, providing our strong service delivery. And then I mentioned the three other additional expenditure items. If council was so inclined, we could consider, you could consider this tomorrow night as a budget amendment. You're back up to second, Peggy. Consider this as a budget amendment tomorrow night's meeting if so inclined. And that's, that's kind of where we are for now. Mr. Butler and I had some conversations on Friday and he asked us to take a look at some, some different alternatives and ideas as well. He and I did not have a chance to touch base today to talk through that. So, Mr. Butler, I may yield to you, I don't know if you had time to look at this earlier today, or if you want me to talk through any other ideas or if you have other thoughts.
Well, I'll just, I'll give my, my thought process in general. I did not have a chance this afternoon to dig into it a whole lot. But one of the things that I was really concerned about is that the impact of COVID-19 on everybody has been sort of symmetrical. Meaning regardless of your income level, you've been hit in some capacity. And a lot of the expenses that people have been hit with are, are equal in nature. Whether it's additional childcare, whether it's additional expenses to get your children educated and that sort of thing. So I was really concerned about some of our lower wage employees. And just a static percentage increase would not have as intrinsic benefit upon them as it would for some of our higher wage employees. So I asked Harden, is there a way that we can look at how to boost those lower income level employees that have worked through this thing and fought through this with this at such a tremendous level? And Harden, I know this is your, sort of your take on it and your run at it. But, you know, initially I was thinking maybe, maybe should we stagger the percentages based on income levels, but not wanting to overcomplicate things too much. And then Harden came back with this proposal. But I am completely fine given our financial condition, although I am, you know, concerned. We've obviously, we can see a lot of negative trends with COVID-19, which means that we could have some additional expenses looming that we're unaware of. So the euphoria of our financial position might be short-lived if we're not cautious. But I'm fully in agreement that we should go ahead and implement the merit increases that were proposed. But I would like to see us do something additional for the lower-level income employees. If, if everybody would be agreeable in some capacity. And I'm not saying this is the answer. Appreciate Harden putting the pencil to it and trying to come up with, with something. But I'd like to get some thoughts on that if, if anybody has any.
I'd like to weigh, I'd like to weigh in on that. Good. Jim, I, I agree. I think we need to move ahead for, you know, the one and a half. I'll back up a minute. I'd like to thank our city employees. You know, they've done a lot and it's been a tough eight months or so. And I think, two things. Number one, I'd like to recognize them and show our appreciation. And I think we can afford it. And I would like to move forward with that if I could. And also, I looked at what you proposed, you know, or really what Harden put together in response to your request. And I'm afraid if we would do some kind of tier system, you'd get into sort of, you, you got a compression issue of a different salary grades. I know we had some years ago, we had, we had a big time compression issue. I don't know, maybe 15, 20 years ago. I don't remember exactly. So I would be inclined to go with a one-time, a one-time payment. And, and I'm, I'd be in favor of going for the one-time payment of the, of the $500 for the lower wage employees. Anyway, that's my take. I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Other council comments on that? Questions?
Harden, let me ask you the question. The, is that read as correctly? It was $500 one time to 343 full-time employees. I'm sure there was a sort of a salary number that you had figured there in terms of who would qualify for that additional $500?
Yes, sir. And that was, this, this is intended to anybody who is $24 an hour or less. $24, $24 an hour or less, which is roughly the $50,000, roughly the $50,000 threshold. And then again, that 343 obviously does not also, does not include our full-time sworn police as well. So that's why that number looks a little lower than what folks are used to.
What percentage of the full-time employees would that be Harden? It was 343?
Peggy, you want to say that?
Yes, I'm gonna try and see if I can calculate that. Not including the sworn, that's about 73%.
Okay. I'm good with that also.
Sorry, I zoned out there because I was multiplying. What, what did you say that, that percentage was about?
That 73, 343 employees who had received the $500 bonus because they make $24 an hour or less is about 73% of total full-time employees, not counting the sworn in that total. Because the sworn, we're not including the sworn in this proposal since they got the full DI for most of the year.
Okay, that's, I couldn't, I couldn't come up with that same number. I got you. All right, but when you're talking about this one-time $500 payment to 343 employees, the full cost of that is $210,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, what else does that include?
Benefits, the retirement 401K, the FICA.
Just, just from past experience, in other issues, let me just say this. The employees, the one-time payout like this is, is a, is certainly very much appreciated by, by many of these employees making the salaries, which has been identified here. It's, it's, it's certainly a morale booster for, for many of them. And frankly, something that many of them can certainly utilize now as they're struggling with children at home and school, what to do with after-school plans when the programs or whatever, just, just the bills that they're facing.
There's no doubt that a bonus like this is very helpful to offset some of the expenditures of people. In addition, I can't get over the prices of food. I'm just still shocked at how, how expensive food has become. I don't know if that's part of inflation or what. But I do have one question about one of the frozen positions, if you don't mind going back to that. And, and there may be, well, I'm not going to give the answer myself. But it's about the teen program. And I'm just wondering if that's, if, if that would be possible for that to continue in COVID? Or is that just out of the question? I just feel as though anything that occupies teens these days is worth the funding for it. Somebody respond to that?
Frank wants to comment, but my understanding is that that program is not happening right now due to the COVID restrictions.
That's fine then.
Rachel, anything else you'd like to add or tell me?
Just that, that's a small program. It's the Teen Video Production and Theater Program. And my understanding is they've been doing a little bit of virtual work and they do have some staff to do that. They were just looking for an additional staff member when we went through the hiring freeze.
So stepping back to the merit pay and the one-time payment, further council comments on that? Have we looked at, I know council member Butler brought up the fact that this pandemic has hit everyone. And council member Owen brought up the fact that morale is impacted by these one-time payments. Is there any thought to including our part-time employees in this? Because they are continuing to render service to our city. And they're equally hit by this pandemic?
Good question, Mayor.
Yeah. We, we have struggled with that. And I guess there's a couple of different categories of part-time. So you have your part-time seasonal, it does are harder to track and do something like this. But you're, I think one of the groups that we have talked about in past years is your part-time regular. You know, the folks that are with us all year long, but just happen to work less than, you know, less than 30 hours. And I would welcome my colleagues to join in too, if you have thoughts on that. I mean, I think the, the folks that are, I don't know if Jamie Joyner's on the call or not, but I think the folks we classify as, as part-time regular, you know, that are here all year or most of the year, could certainly be a category and certainly folks that we count on.
Jamie, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Trying to get off muted.
There you go. Why is it calling?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That is something we could certainly look at. We have not currently looked at an option to include the part-time employees. Harden's talking about those folks that are year-round that maintain around 19 hours or less, 19 hours a week or less continually. So that is something we can certainly look at and see what those numbers look like as well.
It would be my preference to include them for them. Again, they're continuing to render critical services to our community and they're part of our team.
And I think that would be, that's certainly reasonable with regular part-time employees. It, it doesn't have to be an equal dollar amount. It could be adjusted for the, for the, you know, maybe, maybe to a lesser degree overall. But I, I concur with that too. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, if council is in agreement, I will do my best. You, we sent out a budget amendment earlier that we would like to put on the council agenda for tomorrow night. Those numbers only represent the half percent for all the full-time. Because that's the additional budget that's needed. If it is in agreement with you, we will try to get prepared before council tomorrow night, a budget amendment that includes the $500 payment to employees who make $24 or less, full-time employees. And I'm assuming a one and a half percent increase for those full-time individuals, I mean, part-time individuals who work year-round. So the numbers will look different than what you've already received is what I'm saying. But the budget amendment will be as long. Is that?
Say that again. You said a one and a half for part-time. I think it's a one-time payment for part-time.
Oh, I was, I misunderstood. I was thinking that, so you just want the part-time to be included and then the $500?
I think as council member Butler had mentioned, looking at some alternative fees or like rate schedule, whether we do a lower payment for those folks or something that adjusts based on the kind of hours they provide.
What do y'all think of the $300 payments to those employees?
I think that's simple, Harold. That makes it easy.
Yep, that sounds, I was floating around 200 in my, 250 in my head, but 300 sounds fine.
Yep, that makes it easy on Peggy.
Yeah.
So tomorrow night, if you're in agreement, we'll bring a budget amendment that will have an extra half percent for full-time, a $500 one-time payment for employees making $24 an hour or less, and a $300 payment for year-round, part-time individuals.
Mayor, pro temp hikes, any, does that sound good to you? Your audio is very quiet if you responded. Sorry.
Sorry. Yes, it's fine with me.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. All right. Any other, any other discussion on that?
Peggy, can you have those checks cut by tomorrow?
I'll be ready.
All right. On behalf of my colleagues here at the city, thank you very much for your generosity and for your willingness to do that. As you stated, it will go a long way. And our folks have done some amazing work. It really, really is impressive what has happened here. It really, really is impressive what has happened here, you know, since the spring when this hit us. And it's things that we have not seen. And there's, I could, you know, share dozens upon dozens of individual stories. You know some of those stories too, my colleagues know those stories and it's much appreciated. So thank you very much for your consideration.
And back to what Jim and Ian both said about the part-time. You know, in many situations, those part-time employees are working directly beside the full-time employees, doing almost identical work, just less hours, you know, a week. So I think that's extremely fair to make sure they're recognized because they're vital to us.
Yeah, and I appreciate everyone's willingness to include them in that. I know, thinking about morale, we definitely want to make sure that everyone's included. All right, any other discussion on this part of our agenda, otherwise we'll move on to item E. All right, thank you, Peggy. All right, item E is backyard chicken ordinance. At this time, I'd like to recognize our planning manager Conrad Almeida.
Good, good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm just gonna see if I can get my, if I can get screen share capability.
All right, should be able to share now.
Thank you. Which of my three screens will I be sharing?
There we go.
Can you see my presentation, right? Okay. Can you see, you can see my presentation, correct? Is it the big one? Okay, all right. So tonight I'll be presenting the draft backyard chicken ordinance and some related impacts. The, tonight's presentation will be providing an introduction, some background concerning chickens in Burlington, the draft and much anticipated ordinance, the expected responses with some enforcement activity discussions with the animal services and with code enforcement, some permitting, review, fees, and then some opportunity for a final discussion. For some background, two thousand and six, the code of ordinances was changed to prohibit chickens within city corporate limits. The past summer, the city council has asked staff to look further into having chickens as permitted uses. We presented some findings both in our August and September work session and were asked to provide you all with a follow-up preparation of a draft ordinance for tonight's work session. Moving towards the allowing of chickens, it's going to first require us to look at the existing code of ordinances. Chapter six, Article two, Section six dash thirteen would need to be changed to distinguish chickens from other fowl such as turkeys and then point to standards for those chickens in the Unified Development Ordinance. Skipping ahead to chapter eight in the UDO and as a point of just clarification, so that we can have a common understanding of what is referred to in the UDO for chickens, chicken coops, chicken enclosures and termination and processing, these additional definitions will be included in the UDO update or in this draft ordinance. In the draft ordinance, chickens are to be allowed as an accessory use of backyard chickens and only as an accessory use to a principal use of a detached, single-family residence in the low-density residential, the medium-density residential, the high-density residential and the planned development zone districts. The draft ordinance proposes that there be a maximum number of four chickens per lot, a prohibition on roosters, restricting the selling of eggs, chicks, adult chickens and manure, requiring that the termination or processing of chickens be done out of view from any public area or adjacent property and restrict chickens from running freely outside of a coop or an enclosure. Further requirements would be that chickens be provided a coop and an enclosure, that chickens be secured in coops during non-daylight hours, that a coop be provided, provide a minimum of three square feet per chicken and a clearance of at least eighteen inches in height. And then enclosures include at least five square feet per chicken and that they be covered to prevent chickens from flying out. Moving on to the coop and enclosure minimum setbacks, it would be required that they be twenty-five feet from a side and rear property line, located no closer than fifty feet to a residence on an adjacent lot, that they be closer to the primary living structure on the property rather than a neighbor's living structure and that they be located behind the line formed by the back wall of the residence. In terms of maintenance, upkeep and well-being, the draft ordinance requires that coops and enclosures be well-built for the safety of the chickens. They have access to proper living conditions, that their areas be maintained in a clean manner, that their feed be securely stored, that chicken manure be properly sealed and composted, that chickens remain, chicken remains, so if there's a dead chicken, that they be properly disposed of and that compliance to existing chapter six and twenty-two are still applicable and relevant. Moving away from the draft ordinance or to touch on some anticipated enforcement activity with animal services and code enforcement, the assumption is we'll be working in partnership together, but we're expecting that animal services be the primary responders to general welfare and animal-related concerns, whereas code enforcement will be primarily responding to use setbacks and structural concerns, structure concerns of coops and enclosures. And so right now, I'd like to, due to some potential impacts on existing services, I'd like to introduce Jessica Rias, our Animal Services Director, to provide some additional comments on resources, implementation. Go ahead, Jess.
Thanks, Conrad. Yeah, so as far as the enforcement activities that relates to animal services, that does bring up some special considerations for us as it relates to field staff. Currently, we only have two animal services officers that respond to all the animal-related calls for service in the city and they're on call and working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, every day of the year, including holidays. So this has been the case for many years despite the city's growth and increasing population and of course, increasing animal-related calls for service. Just a bit of history, before two thousand and sixteen, animal services was part of the police department and police officers answered a significant proportion of animal-related calls. Even after animal services became a standalone department, police continued to supplement animal services officers in response to the animal-related calls up until the summer when, due to their own staffing constraints, police had to make some changes and shifts in their own operations and that resulted in referring all of the animal calls to our two animal services field staff. So staffing at our department is extremely limited. There's not other positions that we can use to shift and fill in the gaps that was created. So that meant the workloads of the two existing officers further increased. Now, during the majority of the year, our two field officers are responding to an average of about ten calls per day and that requires their presence in the field, so not including some of the things that they handle remotely or over the phone. We're struggling to meet the call demands in the field at times and the pressure on the employees in this position is a continual concern as it relates to their health and safety. And during times when we have a couple, you know, one of the two officers out on either leave or out sick or maybe they're testifying in a case in court or if they're on another call, our capacity to respond to animal service requests is further reduced and currently we're often only able to answer emergency and high priority calls in that situation. And that has some impacts related to service delays for the non-urgent calls and this can sometimes, you know, result in the minor issues escalating into more serious ones. With the addition of the backyard chicken ordinance, of course, issues related to staffing levels that with the animal services officer position will become even more compounded. So as part of this, I think I would ask that we carefully consider the staffing at animal services and consider adding an animal services officer position to our department, not only so we can continue to meet the current growing needs and levels of call demands that's increased over the years, you know, due to growth of the city and the added responsibilities related to the shifts at the police department, but also adding the extra responsibilities related to the backyard chicken ordinance will be something that we need to make sure we can appropriately have staff available to address and enforce.
Great. Thank you, Jess. In terms of the permitting and review initiated for, will be, when someone comes in for a coop and enclosure, they'll be initiating that request through the city's new Smart Gov portal as an accessory structure and it will be reviewed for compliance per the new draft UDO standards under the draft ordinance. In terms of the coop and enclosure being reviewed as an accessory structure, this would have a building permit review fee of fifty-two dollars, one-time fee. But I also just wanted to point out some other examples from other cities that have fees as well. This concludes the presentation and staff is available for any further, any questions or any further explanation.
Very good, thank you, Jess, thank you, Conrad.
Thanks, Conrad.
I do believe in recognition of coastal Carolina, we should probably call this the Shanticlear ordinance now.
Bet that's Shanticlears.
You know, are we, are we considering action on this at a bad time given the fact that we're stressed with shortages? We have our own COVID challenges with NPD and certainly other agencies, other entities within the city with contact tracing or those that come in close contact, we're short-staffed. Obviously Jess is concerned about it from their standpoint. Would we be more prudent to table this till we're through a COVID era and we understand what our staffing is more like so that we don't create a situation that we can't really manage?
I thanks a lot of merit to that, Jim. And it's because it will take some staff, not only in terms of field staffing, but it's, well, it's gonna take an awful lot of staffing, not only from animal services, but also in terms of billing inspections also, minimal housing, whoever's gonna be doing all this. So that's a good suggestion to, you know, try to figure out a time during the year when we think we, you know, it's gonna be safer for all of our employees to be out.
The work has been done and city staff's done a great job and I, you know, while I still am amazed at the number of responses that we've had throughout the community on this particular topic, I think it's probably been the most discussed topic I've had personally of anything I've ever been involved in ironically. But a lot of work went into this and we've tried to be mindful of those that are interested in supporting this and those that are not. But at the same time, we've got to be prudent in our own ability to govern a change. And, you know, we're talking about COVID and we're talking about some of the models that say it's going to double and then double again. And I'm just afraid that we're going to find ourselves in a very unique staffing position and trying to maybe move forward on something that is not overall as important in the big scheme of things of some of these other issues that we're dealing with. My take on it.
Thank you for that. Hello, council questions, comments?
If I could, Mayor, I'd just like to say hats off to Jessica and her staff for, I'm not sure if we realized that they're picking up all the animal services calls now. And that's pretty amazing with the number of people they've got over there working right now. And we talk about contact, that's an awful lot of contact, not only with animals, but like Jim said, owners of the animals that we're dealing with there.
Well, Harold, that brings up my question, which Jess, you talked a little about this. And I know on a previous agenda item, we had talked about unfreezing some positions. I was just wondering if you could elaborate any relation here between some of the positions that are unfreezing and how that may help you and then any relationship to the field personnel that you talked about?
Unfortunately, the positions we're asking for to be unfrozen are part-time positions that help supplement the areas of customer service and care of animals in the shelter. And those are particularly critical as we've increased our foster program, which is really great and engaging community to, you know, help us take care of the homeless pets. But those positions are really focused for in-shelter support. The animal control field officer's position, that's a little bit different and that's not something that we can utilize a part-time staff member for. You know, the knowledge and skills required of animal services officers nowadays, it's a lot greater than it's usually, you know, it has been historically. And the field of animal services is just, you know, it's become more professionalized. Officers must be adept at handling a wide range of issues in the field, have superior communication, problem-solving skills. They, you know, have to work well with a diverse public, be very knowledgeable about laws and ordinances and current recommended practices and procedures within the industry. Our animal services officers go through a national certification process to make sure that they're skilled with the knowledge and skills that they need to perform their jobs well. And that's just not something we can easily work a part-time position into. We invest a lot in these officers and it's really important that, you know, we manage their workloads and, you know, keep them with us. And, you know, you know, that's another challenge too. They're professionals at what they do.
Makes a lot of sense. Could you, you had talked about how, based on obviously our city's growing and demand for those services have been growing. So regardless of the chicken ordinance, you're already at a constraint, a bottleneck on those field personnel, right?
We are, we're really concerned about our staffing levels right now as, you know, as, you know, the population in our city's grown and the shifts that's had to occur because of the staffing issues that the police department are working through to make sure our public safety needs are met in the city. Those are real concerns. We still only have two field officers serving our entire city and that's again twenty-four-seven. It's pretty remarkable that they're doing all the work that they do, but it's something that is a need for us regardless of the chicken ordinance to have that additional animal services officer.
I know you and I have talked previously about some of the other opportunities for animal services. I think one of them being feral cats where we do some work, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done there to control feral cat populations. So what I'm trying to understand is chickens is one thing, but already we're at a constraint with our field personnel. But two, adding somebody, an additional field personnel for you really doesn't just get us chickens. It provides better customer service for all of our residents right now. Plus, I'm wondering if it might potentially expand your capacity to achieve some of those other goals that you've highlighted before, but may not have had resources to tap into.
Yeah, and I think I've talked a little bit about that, but, you know, part of the shifts that our, you know, department has gone through, you know, is really a tremendous transformation that's happened over the last several years as we've professionalized this work group and skill level. There's now more of a community-oriented approach to animal field services that seeks to work with and within our city's neighborhoods to resolve animal-related problems there in the community versus the historic enforcement approach. So, you know, to compare it with a program, it's kind of like the shifts we've made toward community policing. And it's coming from an approach of really helping citizens resolve problems in the community, you know, without expensive and labor-intensive, you know, enforcement practices that often aren't as effective at the root, getting to the root issue. So this type of approach, it helps reshape the relationship our department has had with the community, which has, you know, become much more positive over recent years. It enhances our credibility and our community's perception of our department in general. So this is something that we want to continue moving along and of course, adding that extra additional animal services officer. You know, those are some of the things that that person will be doing.
Very good, thank you for that. I had another question, this is for Conrad. Related to you, referred to the coops as generally an accessory building type. And I was curious how the twenty-five-foot setback relates to other accessory buildings and in particular, accessory building like shed or a dog run.
So the accessory, accessory structure setback is five feet in the, in the most, in the MDR and LDR and residential districts. So you're looking at an HDR. So typical setback for a principal structure would be ten foot, for an accessory structure, five foot. So that's what it is for the sheds and for the chickens, chicken coop and enclosure, we're looking at a twenty-five foot. That's what we would recommend.
Do we have one for dog runs or dog kennels? I assume that's.
I can look that up for you in the meantime, real quick.
So I'd assume there'd be.
I don't know the answer to that right off the top of my head.
Assume fence rules would apply. What I'm curious is. Assume fence rules would apply. What I'm curious is, I mean, as Harold brought up before, there's a nuisance level of a barking dog, which you will get from a dog run. Um and there's a nuisance level from a chicken, which will be probably smell related, but either way, um the setback achieve attempts to achieve. An alleviation of that to some degree. Um and if we don't, I I don't want us to apply a different standard. To those two different types of buildings that's kind of confusing. Um so if we already have a standard for an accessory building of five feet. Um and if dog run is is similarly in that same realm, why make a chicken uh coop so much different? We recognize there's a nuisance there, uh but I think we've you've done a good job of identifying a couple of ways to achieve that, which is one, using the back wall of the structure as a. A guide and doing some of the separation from uh primary property or primary structures.
Just off the cuff, looking at the the current U D O, we have standards for kennel indoor outdoor. And we do have requirements and focusing on numbers, we're looking at uh. All activities shall be at least two hundred linear feet from a lot in a residential or O I zoning district.
But a a residential dog run.
Hmm. So we're looking at um an a hundred linear feet. So it's, it looks pretty. It looks pretty um more significant than twenty five feet. All activities associated shall take place within an enclosed and soundproof structure or the use.
So I was wondering from a residential, do we just not have a a rule?
So yeah, let me look at the. Well, that's true. I mean, we don't allow indoor kennels or outdoor kennels in 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 residential zoning districts.
Again, I I'm what I'm saying, I'm saying a dog run.
Oh, a dog run.
We can have a run. We have them. Um.
Let me, let me look that up for you, Mayor, and I'll get back to you on that one. Okay.
Mayor Perterm Hikes, did you want to weigh in at all?
Well, um it seems like there are two issues here and um but I feel like they're getting mixed up to me. That the chicken ordinance is getting predicated on whether or not we can hire an animal control person. Um it seems like there's a need in animal control um and that this hiring a person because there would be chicken. Coordination necessary looks like a win win. Um but then there are some issues around the actually um when we do it. And I guess there's a third thing, which is what do you think of the way this ordinance is worded? And I'm I'm, for instance, I'm curious about the four hundred square feet. I can't even imagine. Needing a hundred square feet per chicken. Um there are people in our city who don't. Have the living space that's that large. I I don't understand how that. Got to be a number like that. That doesn't make sense to me. And and then you're asking other questions related to dog runs and whether they are on the same distance from other people's properties. But it just seems to me that I want to separate those those questions.
I think it's a really important point, which is the public has asked us related to food security during the pandemic to consider the foul ordinance. Um and so I think this is a pandemic appropriate topic for our council to be evaluating. Um and the the staffing and service quality concerns for animal services are in another important topic, but. As you mentioned, they they are interrelated, but each valid in their own discussion. Councilmember Ward, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh you just mentioned the food insecurity. Uh I I seem like to me, you know, when we did the survey. Uh there was not, I I don't, maybe Conrad can correct me. There was the food insecurity identified as an issue. Uh was it a problem? Do you recall?
If honestly, um Morgan is Morgan Lasseter available since the our communications office conducted the the survey?
Who's Morgan?
Yeah. Um yeah, so when we did the public comment, there there was some mention that people were excited about being able to use it for food. Um I would say that um that was not the majority of the comments. It was mentioned in some of them as a as a pro that folks were looking forward to being able to do that. Um when I think when the ask came to us, I think it probably y'all, y'all might have heard that more than I think we did um individually.
Okay, the other question I had, you know, which has been already addressed is I I I certainly think, you know, uh. You know, there's some budget issues that's come, you know, that are inherent in this and. And they've just been stated, you know, they're interrelated. So I'm not so sure now's the now's the time to to consider it. So that's. That's really all the questions and comments I have, so.
I want to give credit to, I gotta give credit to Conrad and his staff for putting all this together because it's 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 uh. It's pretty thorough, Conrad. You covered a lot of different topics here.
Uh, thank you.
You you now might be an official chicken uh expert. You can add that onto your uh. Whatever A I C P or whatever you have here. Um but but back to Kathy's point of. Uh. Help me out. And and again, the I I I hope this doesn't go back to food preparation, but the uh uh the. New definitions, termination and processing, that's a, as I said earlier one time, that's not a pretty issue. Uh and you've you've attempted to identify. Uh how that could take place? And help me out. It it does that need to be anything? Then if I read this correctly, does that need to be in an enclosed structure?
The I I think by default it would be an enclosed structure. I mean. The idea is that you can't see the termination and processing of the chicken from public view. Or if a neighbor looks out, walks onto their backyard and they see their someone's processing chicken. So. I'd imagine it wouldn't necessarily have to be in a fully enclosed structure, but at least a free, you know, someone garage with the door facing um a non-public area, but. I'm trying to think of hypotheticals, but yeah, it's possible that. Now I'm you're, I'm talking myself into thinking that it would be in a fully enclosed structure. That might be a good.
Could be a privacy fence.
Yeah, Connor, and just to to the point of the way this ordinance is drafted, backyard chickens are primarily a. For egg production for a family as well as a kind of backyard pet. Uh and the termination piece seems to primarily be worded in a a manner to to focus on humane keeping of these animals. With a limit of four, nobody's building a industrial production processing facility in their backyard to slaughter chickens. We're we're just trying to address when chickens come to the end of their life. How that should be handled in an urban setting. Is that correct?
Correct. And to your point, um the this this definition was inspired from looking at the American uh Veterinary Medical Association. And their their uh standards for termination and processing of for poultry and chickens is along the lines of industrial processing. So. If it's a matter of simplifying that language or, you know, having it more toned down, can take a look at that as well.
I think it's straightforward and.
Okay.
Focus on how you make sure it doesn't become a nuisance issue, which is, I mean, you shouldn't be doing this in your front lawn in open view of everyone.
Correct.
So being respectful of your neighbors is the key part, and I think y'all did a good job wording that.
Yeah, I agree on that.
Any any luck on dog runs? I I don't feel like we have a a separation. I feel like they end up being right on lot lines. Um so my preference would be that we remove the setback piece from this or treat it at that five, five foot. And allow. The freedom for our our residents. To do the placement of that. I think we've achieved the goal of keeping these out of sight uh and away from residential structures with the. Again, the back wall verbiage and then the separation from a primary structure and then. Uh that's kind of a new way of doing it, but you talked about that it has to be closer to your primary structure than um your neighbors, which I think is a a good way of achieving that as well. So you can't stick it. All the way back in your property in a way that would burden uh or harm the property value of others. Um. And you've got to keep it closer to your structure. So I I think we achieve it there and the setback is just an additional layer um that makes it overly burdensome.
So hearing correctly, it would be looking at applying accessory structures, five foot setback. But then applying the other setback because there's a distance requirement of fifty feet, uh no closer than fifty feet to a re- an adjacent residence. For example, the other standards are okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Conrad, is that gonna be your guys doing the uh? Going out and actually trying to uh approve the coops in terms of its location and construction? And then we, and then will you guys begin the calls when people complain about them?
Yes, sir.
Have you determined how that might impact your staff?
Had a chance to discuss this over with, uh, you know, our chief code enforcement officer, Chris Reynolds, and. You know, we're we're in a fortunate position where we just added one additional code enforcement officer, so we do have capacity. And in working with partnership with animal control service, you know, animal services, we'll be able to address. The the in field responses and and thinking about uh the permitting process, we're hoping to address. Issues on the front end through the permit review process.
Connor, if you had to estimate how many residents might uh utilize this process. In the coming year. Do you have any idea of what that number might be?
I I don't have an 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 idea of how many residents would would come to utilize the process. Um. Wish wish I had an idea to tell how many folks would be jumping and I and I to to correct myself, I think I said our chief code enforcement officer is Chris Reynolds. Just want to credit, that's Chris Marlin. I get Chris is confused. Sorry, guys.
The uh, Mayor, we we did talk about some of this staff level a week or two ago, um trying to get a sense. We were trying to determine whether to make recommendation on a fee. Or not, and I think we we feel like the number is probably, and this is a wild guess, but we think the number's a hundred. You know, if it's if we missed it by half, there's two hundred, uh which led us to a decision not to recommend a fee. Cause it's just not worth creating a mechanism. For one, before you get into the philosophy, it's not worth creating a mechanism for such a small amount of of dollars. So I think in that conversation, there were a handful of staff in that conversation. We were thinking a hundred. Maybe so let's say if we've missed that by half, it's two hundred. Now, Conrad, jump in and help me if I'm.
Yeah, I mean, let's just say, you know, we have a hundred residents a year popping in, you know, and we're charging a a building inspection, a building permit. Fee of fifty two dollars. That's we're looking at fifty two hundred dollars a year. Um and. You know, I think that's a pretty uh. What's it called when it's not a conservative figure? I mean, we're we're going pretty high just to see kind of visualize and go through an exercise of potential impacts on staff and. So if we think about a hundred folks lining up, um we'll just run them through that accessory uh structure review process and follow up with. Our code enforcement officers to do that inspection on site to make sure that it's built how it's how we're permitting it.
And that is, yeah, I think you'd mentioned that's available now in the Burlington Smart System, residents, which is, I I had an opportunity to play around on that a couple of weeks ago, and it's a a really easy to use system.
Came at the right timing with COVID and all.
If enacted, residents would be able to simply use that portal to schedule everything and submit their requests and plans.
That's correct.
Be the devil's advocate again. Uh how about you say Harden, you estimate a hundred people? Uh have, what do y'all project the number of people that's gonna have chickens and not gonna have any go back? Well, we'll not understand this. We'll have chickens, we'll bring chickens in, and we'll have any of these things in place. Just said, okay. Backyard chickens, that's what it says. And what happens then when the neighbors complain? Do we go out and require them to do the chicken coop or do we? Take the chickens away and put them somewhere and then bring them back or help me help me with this?
Jess, you have.
I think that, you know, that would probably be a something that falls to Conrad's work group, you know, because animal services is gonna focus on, you know. Prohibited, uh you know, like roosters or animal welfare type issues, but you know, certainly, you know, when we're looking at it, we're looking at, you know, they, we would. If we're called out in that scenario, what we would do is refer them over to planning and inspections to evaluate whether or not that they need to get a. A permit, uh I guess retroactively, and I'm not sure what the process there would be, but I guess that could be one option, or it may be. That there's uh another penalty or citation for failure to get permits and to build an unauthorized structure within our city. That might be another mechanism that that's already in place for such instances.
So Conrad, do you have a big enough office you can bring chickens in and store for a while? The people get things built. How's that work?
Unfortunately, I don't have an office, but um big enough to store the chickens, but I do have an appetite big enough to uh. To uh take care. But I mean, in all in all seriousness, I think, sir, um the we're. We're looking at, we would work with folks to bring them into compliance, especially, you know, um just about educating our officers, go out there and our first. Our first communications with the public is, you know, customer service courtesy. And then we have our 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 protocols of uh using uh notice of violations and giving folks thirty days to get into compliance and. Help them uh get into into what we need them. The parameters of having chickens in Burlington is under the draft ordinance, you know?
How many pa- how many people uh uh responded again that said they wanted the chickens?
It was like thirteen hundred or so responded to the survey and.
Thirteen hundred more than CPAT.
So that brings around a a a point that I think is really important in this. We had a phenomenal level of public involvement in this discussion, which. Think in the end helps us make better decisions as a city and a council. Um my preference would be. That we we take this to the next logical step, which would be a public hearing on the ordinance and ask the general public what they would like us to do. Because it's where we started this and where we should should move it to next. Uh I would entertain the idea that we should put this as an advertised public hearing. For the ordinance for maybe January at our meeting for the fifth or the nineteenth. Um and that that may give us a better handle on uh public feedback based on, did we, did we get it right? Uh is this workable? Um or is there still some gap that people anticipate or uh want us to address? We never get it right on the first go, so.
Yeah, yeah, I see in that, yeah. I'm just saying, if we had thirteen hundred people, eleven hundred people who said they wanted chickens, and now we're talking about a hundred. Homes is gonna have chickens. There's there's quite a, there's quite a difference there between a hundred and thirteen hundred.
Big difference.
Yeah, a heck of a big difference.
So for for numbers sake, sixty percent of the thirteen hundred number responses said they wanted chickens. So you're looking at about seven hundred and eighty city uh responses. Came in with favor for chickens, so maybe we're, our numbers are, you know, we have a day where we have five hundred people at the gates. Wanting chickens um as far as numbers go, but sixty percent of folks who took the survey were in favor of the chickens.
So are you prepared for seven hundred people?
Thankfully, we have an online portal system that can uh can submit those and.
Good luck, Jess.
I'll I'll be, I'll be working weekends possibly. If if so.
A lot of people who responded to that who said that it was just a matter of personal freedom that they would be able to have chickens. Whether they wanted them for themselves. So I don't think that's a number that we need to worry about all showing up on one day. Um I think the uh the idea that most cities just about around us have this available for citizens and and twelve hundred of our citizens reacted to it. Um just seems to me that we need to move forward on it. And I think the staff's done a wonderful job of looking at what other cities are doing and coming up with a way to make this sanitary and safe. To make this sanitary and safe and able to keep the complaints down to a minimum. It seems like that what is what this ordinance would achieve if we passed it. So I want to go along with the mayor's idea that we. Set up data public hearing for this so that people have a chance to respond to it. Then we have other decisions to make after that, but it gives us something to work with.
Mayor, pretend you have a preference of the fifth or the nineteenth for January?
I don't. It depends on what the manager has for.
Mayor, if I may interject, since this would be a draft ordinance, it would need to be going before the planning and zoning commission first for a recommendation. And the anticipated date for that would be. January twenty fifth. And then city council on this on the February sixteenth.
So that puts it back.
That does give us some more time. Counsel, are you amenable to letting go before P and Z? And then bring it back for a public hearing February sixteenth? Any objection to that?
Part of the process.
Yeah, it's how we get feedback and how we draft good ordinances. All right. Any objections to the setback removal that I proposed on that?
So we're saying that what's been recommended now is that. The a chicken coop can be within five feet. Of a, help me now, is that a side yard also?
Lot line, but it's still gotta be behind the back wall of the residence, so it's not.
Okay, so in other words then, but but again, the chickens can be within five feet, living within five feet. Of someone's, your neighbor's property line.
Yes, just like you can have a dog run right up to somebody's property line. In fact, it's more restrictive than a dog run. As your dogs can go right to your neighbor's yard, so.
Well, I'm gonna be, again, I hate to keep on this, but then that means that that neighbor has a dog. Running five feet, you have chickens and dogs side by side, living together.
Well, that's again, Harold, that that's the individual to choose. If your neighbor's got a dog, you might choose to put your chickens on the other side of your yard. So people.
Just just can bring this up.
Big fan fan of personal freedom and letting people.
Just from real life here for a minute.
We all know you've had some very traumatizing experiences with the noisy dogs, so.
I'm not worried about dogs. I'm worried about neighbors. You know, becoming agitated at each other here and that that's the only thing my concern is. And again, it's something we evidently have to deal with, deal with, no different than our dogs, same thing, but I mean, I'm trying to. Actually protect the chickens some, but that dog is loose, it's. You know, unfortunately, that's not good for the chickens.
So and that's why I appreciate staff talked about that they have to be in the enclosure. So this is not chickens running free in a yard. They are, there's the coop and then the enclosure and all of those have to be fenced and covered, so. It's all just additional levels of containment and protection in addition to if you've got a standing fence between your property lines, so. All right, so we will plan to send this to P and Z for the January, their January twenty fifth meeting, bring it back for a public hearing. In front of the council on February sixteenth. Conrad, Jess, any other questions for counsel?
Are we, do we have counsel consensus on changing the setback?
Is there any objection to that setback change?
Would, if we're gonna do that, I think we need to make a note that. If we're gonna have a public hearing, that that was changed, so that could be part of public comment.
Well, I think P and Z can look at that too and.
It should be, it should be clearly discussed that that was a recommended change.
To to be clear, then, the recommend is to strike the the five foot. Side and rear property line setback.
Or that change.
I'm sorry, the twenty five, from twenty five to five, or just to remove that reference?
My thought is five, I mean. I brought up the dog run. I hadn't been able to find a dog run notation in our ordinance book, so I wasn't sure if you were.
Not off of a quick search.
Make it equal to the dog run limit or to what we consider a shed. You can buy a chicken coupon down on Meven Street and Alamance Road right next to the sheds. So the market considers these the same building. Let's not confuse people and differentiate them. All right, Ania, any other clarifications on that? Lively discussion this evening. We appreciate everyone's feedback on that. All right, next on our agenda is item F, special meeting discussion regarding our state delegation. This time I'll recognize our city manager Harden Watkins.
I think I'm gonna defer to Rachel Kelly. So Rachel, you wanna take it?
We had been discussing the fact that we have got some new state delegates representing us in the the state house and state senate and. That it might be beneficial to host a special city council meeting, obviously via Zoom. To introduce ourselves, city council members, staff, the organization to our new delegates and the whole group of delegates. And just giving them some orientation to our organization, maybe sharing some past successes that we've had in working with our delegates at the state level. And discuss some of some of our priorities or things we're keeping in mind going forward into the long session. They go back into session on the thirteenth of January. And I think with with Christmas and holidays and whatnot, we might find some scheduling conflicts, but. Discussing with Harden, we just wanted to see if council had an appetite for us to try to find an amenable date to. To ask our new or the whole delegation of two representatives and a senator to. Have a special meeting with us just to have some orientation and discuss the future.
Thoughts from counsel?
When does the general assembly convene in January, Rachel?
The thirteenth is their is their first, typically that's sort of a cursory meeting. They go home for a little while and come back, but right now that's what's published.
So do we want to do it before that? Is that what you're thinking?
That would be my thinking.
Yeah, I think if if council and obviously the. Our elected officials at the state could find an amenable time before the thirteenth, that might be beneficial.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. All right, any objection to staff trying to set up and find a good time for that meeting? All right, any additional thoughts, comments to include in that discussion?
Obviously, that would be a Zoom meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, Rachel Harden, thank you for that one. All right, next we have item G on our agenda, a review of responses to the coronavirus in other North Carolina cities. At this time, I'd like to recognize. Lieutenant Alan Baylock, welcome.
And Mayor, as Alan gets his screen shared, just want to say we'd. Received comments from a couple of council members about finding out what other folks have done. And and we've asked Lieutenant Baylock to lead that effort for us.
All right, we've got that screen out.
All right, great. Good evening. Thanks for having me. I'll move through this quickly. This is just a review. Of what some of the area responses have been to the coronavirus principally focused on the municipalities along I forty. Our immediate neighbors and largest. In the in the area. So we have color coded community spread as a reference point. That's links to the. Governor's County Report. Describing what level of community spread is present, critical being the most significant and most serious, and that's where Alamance County is currently. So we have a. Greensboro, Raleigh and Winston with municipal state of emergency orders in place, and we'll cover those specifically shortly. Greensboro, that's been in the news with recent enaction of civil penalties, and there's a lot of legal issues around those. That they've been well covered in the media. And then Raleigh really has what's essentially a dated state of emergency order. Or SOE in place that includes alcohol curfew and mask requirement, but those were enacted at the same time as the state. Restrictions. So moving to Raleigh and Winston, they are. Have resolutions in place that reaffirm the executive order, supporting use of face masks, urgency maximum occupancy. With specific emphasis on education, voluntary compliance and then enforcement as a very last resort for gross noncompliance. In one one unique thing from some discussion with leadership in those organizations, they were initial. My apologies for this slideshow moving without command, is that the municipal leadership. Was concerned about ensuring access to federal funding tied to emergency declarations. I don't believe that's been an issue so far, but there was consideration for that and that did stand out as being a bit unique. Most interesting potentially is Durham's effort. It's a public private partnership related to education. Trying to gain voluntary compliance. From businesses and also customers by creating a safe environment for patrons. So especially in the beginning, this was a combined effort. City of Durham, Durham County Health Department, Duke University, generating. Instruction to businesses about how to. Market safe practices. There's good. Free media available for that as well. There's similar practices that are in place for other businesses that are being used in Alamance. The Chamber has a great program, open and safe. And count on me NC. Both of these do very similar things to back the bull, but with less local. Marketing on the count on me, whereas Alamance Chamber is obviously specifically addressing Alamance County businesses. And trying to keep everybody healthy and safe in the workplace and as they go out and shop and consume. City of Burlington's also hosted a mask distribution. This was obviously a recent effort. Tremendous number of masks distributed to the community over thirty two thousand dollars in CARES Act funding to purchase those. Distributed by city staff over the course of the. July twenty fifth weekend where the mask regulations went into effect, trying to make sure that people had. Masks that would keep them safe as they move about. There've been a number. I'm gonna turn it over to Morgan now to cover a communication snapshot also. And if this slideshow moves, I really do apologize. There must be some automated setting within Zoom that I do not know how to control.
Thanks, Alan. Yeah, as we look at what other folks have done, we thought it was a good opportunity to just take a moment and. And look at some of the unique local approaches that we've done here in Burlington. So as you guys know, we kind of have a robust system in place with some tools with our PEG channel, so we've been. Doing those PSAs on there. Also, our our biweekly resident email that goes out to a couple thousand folks. That we've been including safety messages, testing site messages. We will begin to release messaging on vaccine. As soon as we get information from our county health department and other resources in the state, so we'll start to fold those in. Our social channels, of course, and city works that you see go to twenty five thousand, over twenty five thousand households. So something that was unique for Burlington that we were happy with and proud of and feel like we've had a lot of good. Feedback on is the video that we partnered with ABSS with our Williams High School state champion soccer player that scored our winning goal. And he was able to actually deliver this video in English and Spanish, so hopefully you guys have seen that. You know, we did the video with council that you guys helped us out with that we released and got some good. Feedback on as well. And then our city park signage unexpectedly became a little bit of a TikTok star. That we were not anticipating happening. My twelve year old pointed it out to me and has it saved on her story too. But to date, it's reached over forty. Forty three thousand, thousand. To date and been shared over five thousand times, so we're really excited about that. And then next slide, if it'll let you do it, Alan. So we identified in October that there was also a gap in information being shared in our community when it came to that COVID dashboard. It was being shared daily in other places and we started to see that not happening as much, so the. City of Burlington decided to kind of take that over, so we do post that daily for our community just to keep that data. Top of mind. And then we begin to see multi housing units being a concern area and got feedback from that, so we kind of came up with. Some communications that were specific to that and went out into the community and got that word out as well as some packages with some. With some mask and some sanitizer and some soap and some stuff for folks to use, so. We think it's important here in Burlington to make sure that we're identifying where we're seeing our problem sites and addressing those grassroots and locally. So as we're looking at this, we just want to keep that in mind. Back to you, Alan.
Those are the, there's. My apologies for the technical issues. I usually do not have this problem. There's one slide that was admitted. That I think is particularly informational and informative. For everybody. Hopefully I can get it to show. So this one's particularly important because it really shows. How severe the impacts were on members of. Our community in addition to other citizens in North Carolina as a result of severe restrictions. They made it really difficult for people to work because businesses were forced to close. We know that that's a potential outcome if businesses aren't operating safely, so that obviously. Is particularly important in our community. We want the businesses to stay open. We want people to be able to continue to be employed. And then we of course see that in contrast to what happens with the daily rising cases, so I didn't want to. Miss out on an opportunity to address that and manager Watkins may have some other comments on in that space. That's concludes my. Piece of the presentation.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Morgan. I thought that slide with the the number of. Folks that were unemployed in March and April is pretty dramatic. That was provided by some of the PTRC staff. And then I think, as Alan showed, that with the daily cases now rising, that there is some, obviously there's some trade off and some. Balance there. And I know council member Owen and others were both interested in talking through a potential resolution or some other. Formal city council action and steps, and we're open to help facilitate any. And all of that and wanted to give you this background information leading up to that. I think the. I've been on a couple of mayor, metro mayor's phone calls and Durham has shared a little bit about their back on the bull program. That seems. Very interesting and and I think I'll also share. Comments that Secretary Cohen made in a call I participated on that said that, you know. Winning hearts and minds is the is the key to success and you know what's hard is that's different and it was she acknowledges and we know. That's different in every community, how you do that and how you accomplish that. So with those two things leading in, like I said, the back on the bull is more of an ambassador. Program with a lot of impetus behind it. I think there's a local PR firm that's helping folks in Durham with that. They're obviously one, you know, one city county combined, things are a little easier to coordinate. I think one of the challenges for us is our. Consumer market is, you know, six or seven cities, quite honestly, and our average consumer doesn't know what, may or may not know what jurisdiction. They're in at that particular moment. As they're, you know, traversing to a shop or to a store. So those are some of our unique challenges, but we're open to, we'd love to get some council comments and council feedback and. We want to do something. We want to try to help. We want to try to help make a difference and if you'll help guide us, we're happy to do the work to to get something ready.
One of the things that I've read. From the CDC says that one of their concerns is that because of the quarantine period of time being so long, there are a lot of sick people. there are a lot of sick people not self reporting and going to work because they don't want to be out of work for an extended period of time. Therefore, I think the CDC has looked at making a recommendation to shorten the quarantine times. Have we looked into that? Have we got any information on that?
That has reduced, that time has been reduced. I think there is written material that came out right at the end of last week. And I don't know if Jamie's on the call or anybody from our COVID advisory committee. Alan's really stays on top. Anybody wants to jump in with where that has landed, the quarantine time periods?
Sure. The CDC made that recommendation, but it is up to each local jurisdiction for their numbers. So we're looking, we're waiting on that guidance from the local health department.
Do you know what number they used in their recommendation?
Seven days, I think.
It's seven with the test and ten without.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And the, and the reason being is a pretty interesting article. The reason being and, and I've, I've seen it in the private sector specific to certain groups of employees in certain sectors, they just can't miss work. Therefore, they're not self reporting their illness and they're reporting to work ill and, and spreading the, the virus, you know, in a more irresponsible fashion because they're kind of between a rock and a hard place, for, for lack of a better word. So, you know, I applaud the CDC for coming out with, with a, a different approach to this because the key is how do you manage and educate and get everyone comfortable with what the realities are? And at the same time, try to create some normalcy to life because people have to survive.
Agree.
When, when I, when I spoke to Harden, I, 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 I didn't have in mind to do any kind of special implementation as maybe some of the other communities have done. I was just looking at a, 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 a really a, a strong resolution that backs what the governor has put forth. And then figure out a way and, and Morgan and Rachel are wonderful to, to market that as much as we could just to, to try to educate as many of our people as we could to, to, to at least protect them as we getting ready to go through without question a really difficult, probably thirty to sixty days going forward.
Harold, you're right. And I think the most eye opening statement I read from one of the cone informational pieces that they send out routinely was that the cases have doubled in the last month and they're going to double again by the end of the month.
That's right.
And, and you can look at statistics and get confused by statistics, but double is double.
It's locked.
That, that was, that was pretty simple to get your brain around. And I think that to your point, I, I don't know that, I think everyone has a little COVID fatigue and that they're, they're letting their guard down a little bit. And they're, they're maybe thinking, all right, vaccines here. Well, the vaccine's not here. And it's not going to be here to the general public for quite some time. And so that's not, that's not the answer. And I agree that, you know, just letting everybody know that it's still serious and it's more serious than ever, but we've got to do the right thing. I think anything we can come up with, I would support.
That, that's kind of where I was coming from because as you said, the fatigue is here with what's going on and then we all, we all feel that. But, you know, these, these numbers, if you sit down and, and, and take them out over a couple of months is, is simply scary. And it's not just impacting one age group or it's, it's, it's across the board. And, and obviously people are impacted differently. But I, I don't think it's something that, that to me, I, I, I would just like to see us step up and, and at least try to keep this subject in front of people and try to provide as much education, as much help. I, I would, I would even suggest if, if we can, if we have any CARES money left, we try to get some more masks for people. You know, it could be distributed, anything we can do to, to help people that and especially the, the population that Jim mentioned earlier, that between a rock and a hard place that, that have to work and can't, can't do what some other people can do now. I think it'd be worth the investment to try to save as many people and from getting really sick or unfortunately even from losing their lives.
I was impressed with the kind of work that you've already done. The TikTok, I'm barely conversant in TikTok, TikTok, but I am impressed with those kinds of numbers. I didn't know you were doing that. I, I just, I don't know how much we can do, you know? We can keep doing the same thing that we've been doing, but maybe Morgan has more ideas, some things that she could do.
Yeah, we've definitely found that, that the tone has changed when, when you talk about even safety messages out there. So it's, it's, it's a fine balancing act for us as a municipality. And so John and I are trying to really push data right now, just, you know, push all that information that we've, that we have access to that's coming into our, all of our emails and just making sure the community has access to that. And, and goodwill. I mean, that, that folks are, you know, also, you know, being kind to one another on our social media outlets. It's definitely hard to, to make happen these days. But I, I think as we move forward, I think it's going to be important for us to encourage our, our residents to not only to do these safety measures, but to also talk to each other about, you know, what, where they are seeing restaurants operating safely. You know, if, you know, if you're going into a place that you know is not safe, you, you know, can make that decision as an individual. I think that's what we've been talking about as staff is, is seeing how can we, you know, take it as a positive approach, not as a, condemning the, the things that aren't happening. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll massage that as we move forward and figure out how to, how to move our community towards that. Hearts and minds are hard to win, but we're, we're, we're trying.
I have a quick question, Morgan, to follow up on what Harold said. Is it possible to put something in the water bills, you know, just to remind people, you know, a little flyer of some nature? I know people are inundated by the TV and they're told about social distancing and wearing the mask and washing their hands. Is it something, you know, we may reach some people vis a vis their water bills that we wouldn't reach otherwise, you know, not everybody just, you know, stays glued to the TV. And, but, you know, some of the people that, you know, don't keep up with it as much as others. Is it possible to use that as an avenue and reach people? Do you know? What's your take?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, so city works goes out in the water bill of the households. But that, I mean, I know my husband doesn't even open city works because I see him open the water bill sometimes. But there is a, there is a blurb actually on the water bill itself. Yes, sir, that we can change up. So I can work with Julie Royal and we can get that, maybe some messaging on that. I think that's a great idea.
Does anybody else have any thoughts about that? I mean, it just occurred to me that may be an avenue.
Sure. Anything. Yeah, Bob, I think anything we, anybody we can reach is, is a benefit now.
I do have one question. If we, let's say if we were to adopt a resolution encouraging people to comply. Maybe Alan, you can weigh in on this. Do we, if we, just, I know Greensboro is going to, you know, it looked like to me they're imposing penalties. If we were to adopt a resolution, you know, encouraging people to comply as suggested by Harold. And, and of course people violate the governor's orders. And of course, there's a particular paragraph in there that spells out. I think it's even a class two misdemeanor, you know, by violating it. But in any event, would that, if we did a resolution, you know, encouraging people to comply, would that in any way interfere with any kind of enforcement that action had to be taken with, you know, particularly egregious cases? I, I don't know. What's your take?
I don't believe so. The majority of municipalities that have addressed it with a, a resolution, it's it, it is largely symbolic. They haven't put a fine or anything behind it. But it's a, it is a powerful message from the community about being safe. Mr. Huffman might have some other comments on that, but I don't think there's any, any issues with it.
I don't know. Harold, follow up on your earlier suggestion. Is anyone else interested in maybe getting staff to put something together and just circulate it? And it looks good. You know, we can bring it up, new business tomorrow evening. I, I don't, I don't think it's the kind of thing that we have a public hearing over in April of twenty one about it. I think we quit and do something now.
I, I agree. And I don't know, David, if where you are on this thing in terms of what you make and put together for us.
I believe Harden's already had some staff in, putting some things together for you, just in the event that you want to go to go down this route.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, I appreciate us having this discussion right now more than ever. That fatigue piece is the thing that I'm hearing from mayors around the country is we've got to cut through the fact that people are tired of hearing about this. Everyone's tired of the pandemic, but now more than ever, as Jim mentioned, that doubling factor now is when we really need them to understand the message and understand what they can be doing. Those choices every day to, to not go into a business that's not following some of these recommendations or to, to put the mask on when they're around other people or to modify their activities. That's what we really need them to understand clear messaging. So I would love to see staff bring us a resolution that, that ties those things together. Educating folks, bringing some of the latest CDC recommendations and good guidance. And then also a, a big piece that we've all got to think about is, as mentioned, the vaccines on the horizon. But there's, there's some alarming feedback as far as people's trust in that vaccine. And the number of folks who are saying that they would be willing to take it. And so I think if we have a way of kind of setting the stage of recommending the vaccine, because it is going to be available in a limited fashion for particularly vulnerable populations or first responders initially. So not available to everyone, but if we can start to pave the way, it's just going to make this process hopefully move ahead a little more smoothly.
Yeah.
And it's very time, as we just saw in the news the other day, we had another assisted living facility with an outbreak. So.
Know how much being in, in a store, a local store is contributing to this. It seems to me that it's when people just forget, you know, that they're just in the workplace or wherever they might be, they just forget. It's their, somebody that is their friend and they just don't think about it. It's very hard.
Yeah. All right. Any other feedback? Anything else folks want to roll into that resolution for tomorrow night?
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, Alan, thank you.
Information. Morgan, for your work.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll have that ready as quick as we have something. We'll get it out via email for everyone to look at tomorrow.
And I know Jim and I have mentioned this, that we all need to recognize Mr. Huffman's G B R tonight. He's got there. So, yeah, we just thought we'd, we'd bring that up.
Is that what that was?
It is. I think so, Bob.
You gotta let it grow where it will.
Okay, I understand.
Your, your face looks upside down.
All right. Well, without anything.
Have a little fun sometime, guys. That's right.
With that, we'll move on to item H, our boards and commissions report. We have one traffic commission report at this time. I'll recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm going to be the closer, I guess. I won't keep you very much longer. Tonight, we have one item from the traffic commission. If I can share my screen real quick, I'll flip through that and we'll take any questions that you have. This is a, a repeat somewhat process wise of what the traffic commission has been doing in partnership with the BDOT staff and also the police department staff. We've been going through our city and looking for places that need stop sign control. Again, just has not been installed in the past, but is needed. You can see the, the list of one through twenty nine locations that we bring before you. There also is a map in your packet, but none of these involved any type of changing traffic flow or other impacts. It just needed to have the stop sign installed and that would be on your consent agenda tomorrow if you desire.
Any questions from council on this?
No. Good with it.
All right.
Thank you.
That concludes our regular agenda items. Manager, any report or any?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So one, one additional item. So our staff is already working on your part time. The, the information we need to get you tomorrow for our part time pay item that we discussed. And just want to do one clarification if, if, if council will help me with this. I think the way we're going to interpret part time employees for purposes of this payment would be part time employees that work every week unless they're sit on, unless they're sick or on vacation and make less than twenty four dollars per hour. Does that sound like what council intended? Because there's a lot of, we can come up with a lot of definitions of part time here. So.
Yeah.
Is that?
Are the, are part time employees under that definition who make more than twenty four dollars an hour factored in anywhere else?
They would not.
Okay. So they would not be eligible for the merit?
They would not be eligible for this one time pay offer. Go ahead, Peggy.
That's in line with what we're doing with the full time, five hundred dollars. It's those who are making twenty four dollars an hour or less. So we're trying, I was, we were thinking about being consistent with the part time. The part times who make twenty four dollars, more than twenty four dollars an hour are our retirees that we bring them back on special occasions. So I'd say most of them are not here every week anyway.
Okay. So it's not a major. All right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Is that satisfactory to everyone? So those that work every week unless they're on sick or vacation leave and those that make less than twenty four per hour.
That captures it well.
Thank you for your, again, thank you for your generosity on that for all our team. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That's all of our regular agenda items. Council, any comments or additions? I did want to bring up, I know this is a conversation that Councilmember Ward has brought up in years past about council composition and charter. And I just wanted to get council's feedback about process and maybe it's best to start with Councilmember Ward. Previously, you, you'd suggested council consider expanding the city council, considering wards or districts. And I know I had had some concerns after the last election when we had a, a primary, kind of a goofy primary. We had a primary and then we basically had the same ballot for the general election. And I have some personal concerns about kind of how much money did we spend as a city to hold that kind of a election? So I, one, I'd like to see a, a report back from staff on the costs for our current election process as we're going into twenty twenty one, being an election year for our city government. And two, I'd like for us to consider having a, a discussion to Councilmember Ward's original request years ago of considering some charter changes to help make sure that we're doing the best job we can to represent our community. Councilmember Ward, any thoughts? I know you, you're the expert in this and it's been something on your mind for a long time.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to open a discussion on that. I did back then. I still believe now, expanding the city council, you know, to seven members, I, I think is worthwhile looking into. And maybe staff put together something. I had collected some information back at that time and I'll try to dig out what I have. And, but in any event, I, I would, I would welcome that conversation. So if staff would put something together, that would be very helpful to start the conversation.
If we're going to do that, I'd like to explore award systems. I'm okay.
Okay.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna, if we're gonna peek in the box, let's look at all the pieces.
I think that's, that's good. Councilmember Ward, do you have a, a vision of kind of the best way to facilitate that discussion? You think a, a work session?
Well, I, I don't know. I, I really quite frankly, it'd be better to ask staff to put something together and take a look at it. Then we determine how we proceed, you know, I mean, you know, if, if, you know, maybe Kathy, Harold and of course Jim. If, if, you know, maybe Kathy, Harold, and of course Jim, you know, you know, see, you know, take a look at what we have. And then maybe make some determination about, you know, subsequent conversations. So.
So. I guess first, Mayor Partem Hikes or council member Owen, any, any thoughts? Are you agreeable to us looking into that as a discussion?
I think if it's the council, if it's the majority of the council, I have no problem with it.
Fun.
So my thoughts to clarify, let's kind of put a checklist together for staff to gather some information on. One would be to. Councilmember Butler's point to look at some ward information. I think as we do for so many things, I'd like to see kind of a comparison of where, where our community now pushing towards 60,000 residents. So let's look at some of our peer group communities and what their makeup of their council, like how many seats are they, are they using wards? How does their charter define their election process? Because there's, there's some nuances there of primary or runoff. Or I, I think ranked choice voting is an interesting concept, but our legislature did that as a test and I don't think we're allowed to do that right now. But. So looking at peer group communities, I think would help us frame the discussion. Any other check items for staff to bring back some information on?
No, I mean, pros and cons and. How, not only the mechanics, but the true pros and cons of what, what our studies tell us.
Yep. And as far as the timeline to bring that back.
I mean, that's a heavy lift. I'm going to say that's going to be a. There'll be some legal pieces to that. There's going to be. I think I see that being a multifaceted conversation over a period of months.
Yeah. We want to do a check in then on February 1st work session?
I would say that's too early. I'd look at March.
My, my thought process is. One, is this something where we would be able to make any changes that would impact the 2021 cycle?
I would be out on that. I would not be for that.
I don't think we can. I've looked at, I've looked at the statute. I don't, I don't see how it'd be conceivable to even. Even be considerate for the upcoming election. And I think it really needs to be done in an off election year, quite frankly.
Yeah.
I believe, you know. But in any event, there's a, there's several reasons for that. And I think in off year, so there's no need to rush into it. When I brought it up earlier, it wasn't any rushing around.
Only haven't rushed because it's been a few years since you first brought it up.
Yeah, it, anyway, I didn't, I didn't have many takers. I think when I had the public hearing, I had two people and both of those were my relatives.
When I had it on my agenda, I had it on my agenda to bring up in March of 2020 and then all of a sudden we were slightly preoccupied by something else. So. Since that's not going away anytime soon, my thought is let's kind of bring this back around. So if we do maybe a check in at our March 1st. I think March 1st is the correct work session. If anything, just to kind of see if staff needs further direction, obviously they can request clarification at any time.
But to Bob's point, this is a comprehensive thing. This is a, this is a multi, multifaceted discussion that we got to be real cautious and. Understanding all the consequences as we look at doing this.
But to the same token, I think it's a responsibility to make sure that we are, that our charter achieves its goals of effective representation of our community. And we've grown quite significantly since the last time we made any major revisions to our, our electoral process and our charter.
It'd give me some time to round up a few more friends that I have to come to the public hearing.
There you go. All right. So we'll plan on a March 1st check back on that. Staff, any, any questions? Harden, anything else for clarification at this point?
I think I'll just, I'll start off, get with Mr. Huffman and we'll, we'll get our heads together and we'll probably have some clarification questions for the group.
Okay.
In the near future.
All right. Sounds good. That's all I had for questions. Any other council items? All right. Well, we appreciate everyone. Thank you to all the staff tonight and we'll see everyone back at seven o'clock tomorrow evening, same place. Take care of everyone.
Thanks, guys. See you later.
Good night.
Bye.